I'd like to call and order the regular meeting of the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners for January 2nd, 2018. Invite you to stand if you choose while Commissioner Parrygen leads us in the invocation and then the Pledge of Allegiance.
I'm going to do something a little different this time, and I'm going to read you a passage from Psalms, chapter 5:7, and then a little explanation. A friend of mine sends me these about once a day. This one happens to be about starting the new year, so if you all so choose, please bow your head. "But as for me, by your abundant loving kindness, I will enter your house at your holy temple. I will bow down in reverence to you." Psalm 5:7. The wonderful blessing about walking with God in life is that there is always the opportunity to start anew. God always offers us a new day and a new dawn, a fresh start, no matter what has gone before. In other words, another chance. At the start of this new year, beginning today, here in these chambers, why not take a heartfelt moment to thank Him for the last year, ask His forgiveness for where you have fallen short, and dedicate this new year to Him, to serve Him and love Him? A New Year's prayer. Lord, You made all things new. You bring hope alive in our hearts and cause our inner spirit to be born again. Thank You for this new year, for all the grace and potential it holds. Come and kindle it for us, a mighty flame, so that in Your appointed time we may see Your wonders in full light and live forever to praise Your glorious name. I will each day enter into Your gates with thanksgiving and Your courts with praise and give all that I am to You. I love You, my Father in heaven, my Lord and Savior Jesus, and my precious Holy Spirit. Let all creation humble itself before You. Amen. Blessings and Happy New Year, 2018.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call and roll.
Commissioner Parrygen?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
Commissioner Dunning?
Here.
Commissioner Nash?
Here.
Mayor Wilkerson?
Here. Under awards and recognitions tonight, we have a special case. It seems not to be quite so special for Bowling Green High to win some kind of state championship, but this is a special case for us to recognize the Purple Cheerleading Squad, so invite them to come forward if you would. And ladies, we're going to line you up here in a U in front of the podium so that everybody can see who you are.
Once they're purple, always they're purple.
So purples. We're in, please. I think you've got a pretty good-sized crowd.
Yeah, it's all level. It's all the same group.
All right, Coach, come right ahead. This is one of the pleasures of our job here on the Board of Commissioners is to recognize outstanding accomplishments, and in this case, the Board of Commissioners is issuing a proclamation for the season of Bowling Green Purples Cheerleading, whereas the Kentucky High School Athletic Association took over the state cheerleading competition of three years ago, and whereas 2017 is the first-ever KHSAA state cheerleading title for the Bowling Green High School Purples Cheerleading Team, and whereas this was the first year the KHSAA hosted a game day competition, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purples Cheerleading Team scored a 96.5 out of a possible 100 points and defeated 40 other teams in their division, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purples Cheerleading Team and the coaching staff has dedicated hours of practice and hard work to the 2017 season, and whereas the Bowling Green High School Purple fans are the greatest fans in Kentucky. Now therefore, we, the Bowling Green Board of Commissioners of the City of Bowling Green, do hereby proclaim 2017 as the season of Bowling Green Purples Cheerleading in Bowling Green, Kentucky, and acknowledge this outstanding accomplishment in the area of high school athletics and encourage everyone to congratulate all the members of this team and coaching staff. Congratulations to all of you. And Coach, before we allow them to leave, I'm going to put you on the spot and ask you to identify everybody so that those watching at home knows who's in this squad.
Okay. We would first like to say thank you to the mayor and to the city commission for recognizing the cheerleaders. We appreciate it. So we will try to get their names. Here they come. We have a few more coming in right now.
Good.
Okay, so around the horseshoe, we have Katie Bradley,
Raise your hand.
Macy Steele, Kennedy Steele, Chloe Milliken, Devin Bell, Mackenzie Dewise, Katie Tibbs, Michaela Odell, Eden Coleman, Kaitlyn Haddon, Kaylee Haddon, Emily Jackson, oh, who's there? Hallie Slocum, Rachel Counts, Noelle Cash, Alyssa Wright, Kalen Watt, and then we have two of our coaches with us also today, Steve Dotson and Ben Line.
Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming in, and thank you for how you represent this community. We appreciate you. Whoop, one more picture.
Want a picture? Okay, come back.
Coach, what about the Milliken girl?
She's pretty good.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all very much.
What was that you said? It's always a great day to be a purple, right? All right, as they assemble outside the room, is there any other awards and recognitions that we have this evening? As they prepare to continue to leave the room, Mr. DeFebbe, I think you have some comments you'd like to make and take you just a moment to gather up some items and things.
This room and the Board of Commission meeting has always been something special to me. Twelve years ago to the day, twelve years ago to this day, I attended my first Board of Commission meeting. The night before, I had seen Brooks and Dunn down there. I didn't even know who Brooks and Dunn were, but I went to see them. Twelve years and two months prior to that, my lovely wife and I, Barbara, were in this room and were hired by the City of Bowling Green Commission. There's two people on the dais who were involved in that process, so I want to thank them. I think it's very appropriate to use the same room and forum to announce my intent to retire from city management effective March 1st, 2018. Everybody wants to know why I'm retiring. There's a couple of reasons. First of all, I want to take better care of my health. As many of you know and can see, I have some orthopedic issues that, over the past year, have reached a point where it's difficult for me to operate on a daily basis. But like millions of people out there and thousands in Bowling Green who are in pain, you learn to deal with it. So mine's not anything special. But I have a special job that you all have given me, and it's not good enough as city manager just to make it through the day. Can you all hear me? When you're a city manager, people expect more than just making it through the day, and all of you who know me know that I want to do more than make it through the day. I have other reasons. Second, I feel a special calling to do God's work more. I want to spend time with my 2.69 grandchildren. I have two grandchildren. I have one who's six months pregnant. Did I get the math right?
She's due in May.
Due in May. Hopefully, also, after a year of restoration of some medical things, I'd like to go see the parts of America that I haven't seen, in a weird way, probably like 100 miles at a time. I'm not. When you're retired, I don't think you have to be in a hurry. You have to be there and be back. I just want to enjoy the ride. So I want to go see parts of America, but I got to do some restoration. This is equally a beginning as well as an end for me here. Barbara and I have decided to continue making Bowling Green our home. Barb will continue to do her work at the Med Center, and I hope to have more time to get involved in Bowling Green that I haven't had because I've been a city manager. It doesn't give you much time. So I really like to get involved in the community, and I want to stop asking Brent Childers where such and such a place is because I know where it is. Barbara and I want to thank Bowling Green community for accepting us. We're not from here, but right now, and I hope forever, Bowling Green will be our home, and we've learned to come to understand Bowling Green. I want to be a part of that. I want to thank 11 different commissioners and three different mayors I have the privilege to serve with, and I also want to thank the senior managers behind me who came, as well as hundreds of our employees, and together we have worked hard to achieve your goals. That's what it's all about, achieving the work of the people. Together, we have worked to do many things, but I like to classify them, as we do every year in the annual report. We seek to maintain and improve our city's infrastructure. We take great pride when a citizen drives down the street, that street's in good shape. It's well paved, and the things that make it special are done by us. We want to work to make this city a community. I was talking to one of the commissioners yesterday. I did talk to each commissioner personally, and so this is not the first time they heard this. And I was telling the commissioner, one of the reasons we didn't want to move to Florida is we wanted to be in a city that was a community. Florida is like an enclave of consumers, and I wasn't interested in joining this enclave of consumers. I want to be a part of the community, and we work hard to build a community. Without jobs, you have no community. This body and others before it have created thousands of jobs that make what we call Bowling Green possible. We work, I think, every day to improve the quality of life here in Bowling Green for people who call this home or residence here. And the one we take most seriously is provide the best possible services at the lowest appropriate cost. You don't have to spend a lot of money to do a good job. I think together, the commission, the senior management staff, our employees have done a pretty good job the last 12 years to build an organization, a better organization, a community that they can call home, and finally, a city that is now the third largest that we should take great pride in. I think together, we succeeded in doing that. I finally want to thank my lovely wife Barbara for last... Do you want to stand up? Hope we can't. I want to thank Barb and my four kids. One of the commissioners, yesterday I was telling him about my speech, he says, "Make sure you thank your kids." I thought it was a great idea because any of us who have put change on our kids, it's not easy, and as a city manager, you put a lot of change on your kids, and it's not always easy. Okay, that's it. I think we should get back to work and thank you for your time.
Okay, good.
All right, Coach. All right, as we continue work, we'll have a lot more to say about you as it gets closer to the last meeting, but like I say, we're going to get to work. And I'm going to move items two and three up just because we've got family here for them. So municipal order 2018, number one.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointment of Shaunetta M. Price to the position of community center coordinator in the Parks and Recreation Department.
Yay!
Question by Parrygen, second by Nash.
Very exciting, as is she.
We're excited for you. Thanks. Mr. DeFebbe.
It's a little boring compared to that, but I mean, we had Shaunetta competed with 31 other people.
Yay!
And 10 were interviewed, and we felt deeply, especially the leader of the department, Brent Belcher, that she was the right person at the right time for the right job, and so we're looking forward for her to come and participate. If you ever think that what we do is disconnected from reality, Donetta, Shaunetta, I'm sorry, my daughter-in-law was Donetta. Shaunetta was a participant in this program years ago. So think about the beauty of that. From participant to leading the program. So if anybody has any passion, it should be her. So we want to welcome her aboard, and we're happy for her.
Excited for you. Are there any comments or questions?
I feel well deserved about running this. I'm a bad, I appreciate it.
Great. We've got to do one other thing, make it official. We actually have to vote, so please call and roll.
Parrygen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Ash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Now you're hired. Congratulations. Municipal order 2018, number two.
Municipal order approving the probationary appointments of Justin B. Costel, Ethan P. Decker, Kyle J. Lang, and Benjamin E. Williams to the position of police officer in the Police Department.
So moved.
Second.
Question by Williams, second by Parrygen, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to have Michael Grubbs come up and take you around the field because we did some creative things this time to combine two search classes to fill the complement we need, and Mike can explain that to you. Michael?
Thank you, Mr. DeFebbe. Good afternoon. City manager asked that I describe for the commission and also the public the very extensive process that candidates go through to become a police officer. We actually conduct two recruitment and selection processes a year. We started the first one last year in April and completed it in September, and then the more recent process started in July, so the two actually overlapped. As a result, when we took applications, we had a number of candidates who had applied in the first cycle, and rather than have them go through all the testing again three months later, we gave them the opportunity to skip those tests the second time and move forward. We had 97 applicants. 23 new candidates actually showed up to take the fitness test and our personality tests and psychological testing that's required by the state. And then we had an additional 15 candidates who had applied in the first cycle and then came back in the second cycle. So it was a total of 32 candidates who actually moved forward through the process. From that, they had to do polygraphs. They had to do a very extensive background investigation conducted by the Police Department, psychological evaluation, and then we had interviews. And a representative from the Workforce Recruitment and Outreach Committee also sat in on those interviews. We presently have seven vacancies, two to retirement. We had a relocation. One actually got his law degree, and then we had two other employees transferred to other city jobs. We're here to recommend four appointments. We have five slots in the academy that starts next month. One candidate is a holdover from the last class because we had more candidates than we had slots. So we'll have five candidates starting in February with the four recommended for appointment tonight. In the memo, I gave you a description, explanation of the qualifications of each of the candidates. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any comments or questions for Mr. Grubbs? Thank you, sir. It's a tough job. It's even tougher when you see one of the candidates who you run around with their grandparents, not just their parents. So anyway, any other comments? Please call and roll.
Parrygen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Congratulations, gentlemen. Stand up. Let everybody see who you are. Very pleased for you. You've got a lot of work ahead of you, and if you want to stick around, you're welcome to, but you're excused if you'd like to slip out, too. We'll go back to the second reading of ordinance BG 2017-58.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapter 2, Administration of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordances to repeal, conceal, carry requirements for city facilities and language establishing maximum hourly rates for outside legal services.
So moved.
Second.
Question by Williams, second by Parrygen. Are there any other comments or questions? Did you have a clarification for us, Mr. Williams, that I think we might have about the commission meetings themselves in the law?
Well, I have here the official Commonwealth of Kentucky Department of Criminal Justice training for concealed carry deadly weapons license training, and just so that everyone understands, the changes that are being done this evening don't really have any effect on what goes on inside the chambers during an official meeting. The carrying of concealed weapons of any kind, not just handguns, but any kind of concealed deadly weapon, as defined under the law, is not allowed in any meeting of the governing body of a county, municipality, or special district, or any meeting of the General Assembly, or a committee of the General Assembly, and that's reading from KRS 237.110. That would mean that even someone with a concealed carry deadly weapons permit would not be allowed to carry within the body of this meeting. I think that was a little misunderstood before, and this is the training that's taught to everyone who is seeking a concealed carry deadly weapons license in the state of Kentucky.
Mr. Williams, as I read that, I read it as a governing body of the city, the county, or municipality, but planning and zoning and code enforcement, which also meet in this building, are not governing bodies of, is how I read that. Do you read that differently?
It does say a governing body. It does.
So you would, concealed carry would still be allowed into those particular meetings?
Yes, it would.
Comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Parrygen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
No.
Wilkerson?
Yes. Municipal order 2018, number three.
Municipal order authorizing and accepting annual software subscription services from Cartograph Systems Incorporated of Dubuque, Iowa in the amount of $43,507.20.
So moved.
Second.
Parrygen, second by Williams, Mr. DeFebbe.
Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that separates our Public Works Department and our city in general from others is our ability to use data to solve problems. This is an example of that. Here, we're asking you to renew our maintenance agreement with Cartograph Systems. This is used by Public Works to help drive decisions such as paving, where money should go for overlay with the streets, all the data you need to help make decisions. We've been using this product for a while, so I ask your permission to renew the annual contract. Lynn is here if you have any questions about the detail.
Comments or questions? Call and roll.
Parrygen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018, number one.
Excuse me. Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning a tract of land containing 53.23 acres from AG Agriculture to RS1D Single Family Residential located at 654 John D. Jones Road, presently owned by Pine Oak Developments LLC.
Second. Question by Dunning, second by Nash. Any comments or questions?
Just one clarification. Katie, on my agenda, it says Pin Oak. I don't know if that makes a difference.
Sorry. Probably pronounced it wrong. It's Pin Oak. I pronounced it wrong. I apologize.
Comments or questions from unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning? Please call and roll.
Parrygen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018, number two.
Ordinance rezoning real estate. Ordinance rezoning portions of tracts of land containing 82.01 acres from AG Agriculture and HI Heavy Industrial to RS1A Single Family Residential and RM4 Multi-Family Residential located on Plano Road, presently owned by Natura Parkway Holdings LLC and Greedwood Crossings Incorporated, with Rodney Rogers and Renee Isaacs doing business as Magnolia Hills as contract vendor.
So moved.
Second.
Question by Parrygen, second by Williams. First reading of unanimous recommendation from planning and zoning. Any further comments or questions? Please call and roll.
Parrygen?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. First reading of ordinance BG 2018, number three.
Ordinance amending code of ordinances. Ordinance amending Chapters 9, General Offenses, and 22 Traffic and Motor Vehicles of the City of Bowling Green Code of Ordenses to regulate panhandling, begging, charitable, and political solicitation, and to make other administrative changes.
So moved.
Second by Parrygen, Mr. DeFebbe.
It might be helpful if Jean can give a terse overview of what we're doing here to give the public an understanding about the meets and bounds of your legislation, what we can do and can't do. Jean?
Okay, thank you. Quickly go through this because we did a work session a couple weeks ago. Basically, what this does, this eliminates two existing ordinances that we have and combines it into one ordinance. As I said a couple of weeks ago, I used an International Municipal Lawyers Association model ordinance as a starting point for this one with certain changes. I want to make sure everybody understands this includes all types of solicitation on public property, political, just any type of donations that people want to do on public property. The ordinance does define aggressive solicitation, which doesn't differ a whole lot from what we had before. It does maybe a little bit, but that does prohibit aggressive solicitation anywhere and everywhere on public property and private as well because people can do something about that one. We do allow under this ordinance what we call passive solicitation, which is also defined in the ordinance, but with some limitations. You cannot do passive in areas with heightened personal security concerns. That's also defined in it. Heightened personal privacy concerns is also defined in the ordinance. This picks up such things as like 20 feet, within 20 feet of a teller machine. I think a lot of people, when you get money out of a teller machine, are not real comfortable with somebody being close to you while you're taking money out. About the rest of you, a lot of times I go through drive-throughs. I don't feel real comfortable about somebody coming up behind me even, so we did bring some of those in. We also defined areas with heightened public safety concerns. That was the first change. heightened public safety concerns. That was the first change, I guess, from the one, two weeks ago. There were some suggestions that that definition be broadened, and I did send out, Hope he came out and read to everybody a week or so ago, the changes I made to include traffic or travel lane of any public streets or highways open to vehicle or traffic within the city. That didn't change. But what did, with the definition of traffic or travel lanes, include any entrances or exits from any street or highway or interstate, the shoulders, curbs, gutters, marked or unmarked crosswalks, and right-of-way area adjacent to and outside of traffic or travel lanes, but not including sidewalks. But even when I start talking about passive later on, even in sidewalks, I still prohibit leaving the sidewalk to go out into shoulders and areas. If you want to sit there on the sidewalk and ask for stuff, because sidewalks have always been traditional areas of First Amendment rights. So, I kind of accept the sidewalks, but still put in, when I put in regulations about passive, that you can't leave a sidewalk to go out into the areas of personal, the highway safety areas and solicit. You can solicit only from sidewalks. I don't think, unless you've got the longest arms in the world, you're not going to be able to reach from a sidewalk into getting something from the vehicle. If you remember, a couple weeks ago, we talked about it. I also put in language that's prohibited from both the person soliciting and from the person giving to violate this ordinance about particularly highway concerns. I think that's the concerns that bother people the most, was the traffic and the safety issues being done. We had other issues as well. Couple weeks ago, I guess, we also talked about the permit process. I kept the permit language in it. My initial draft had five days. There were some questions about how that would be enforced. Again, when I went back in and started looking at it, you know, I also started thinking, did you want, you know, do we really want everyone who's out there for one day to have to come out and get a permit? I think there was some general ideas that maybe we didn't want everybody one day have to go out and do it. So, I changed the five-day language that says basically now if you solicit more than two consecutive days, or four days within a calendar year, you're required to come out and get a permit. That will still cause, I think, some enforcement issues with police officers, but I still think that they're around enough that they're going to be able to recognize the people who are out there more than anything else. And the more than two consecutive days, you know, there are two elections a year. I think a lot of people didn't expect that all the volunteers who helped people on election night before, maybe, and the day of the election, to make you volunteers who are holding signs in a corner, to have to go out and get a permit to do that. I think that was kind of the leading force for the more than two consecutive days. But anyway, the five days has been changed again, more than two consecutive days or four days in a calendar year. And that's the major difference in what we talked about two weeks ago.
Questions from Harman?
Are you saying, Jean, that in your definition of soliciting, that's also recovering whatever is being offered? So, someone who is soliciting on the sidewalk, it's basically illegal for them, according to this ordinance now, to step out into traffic and retrieve whatever it is that's being offered?
Yes. It's also against this ordinance for the person in the vehicle to hand them something as well. Yes, they can solicit on the sidewalk. If somebody wants to park that vehicle and walk back and give them something on the sidewalk, that's fine. But it is not proper under this one for that person to solicit, even from the sidewalk, to have a vehicle actually stop and give them something.
Other questions or comments? This is an attempt to try to address the issue that's been brought to our attention. If it doesn't work, we can always come back in and retry like we've done this time. So, anything else? Please call and roll.
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Yes. That's the last item on our agenda, but we do have public comments section. If anybody has a comment they'd like to...
Maybe, can I ask something real quick? Maybe I missed it. I was reading, I missed it. Katie, did we approve the minutes?
No, we did not.
Did I miss the minute? I did. Sure did. Thank you. We had two meetings. Thank you for catching that, Jean. We had two meetings...
I'll give Jeff credit as well. He's watching details for us. Thank you. We had a regular meeting on December nineteenth, two thousand seventeen, and a special meeting on December twentieth, two thousand seventeen, to entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Nash, second. By Perigin. With any additions, deletions, or corrections? Please call and roll.
Perigin?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Dunning?
Yes.
Nash?
Yes.
Wilkerson?
Thank you. Again, we're at public comment. If you have a comment you'd like to bring to the city commission's attention, we'd be happy to entertain those at this time. Give us your name and address, please.
Thank you very much. My name is Dr. Patricia Minter. I live at 1262 Chestnut Street. As we begin a new year, we are here to remind you that for the LGBTQ community here in Bowling Green, this symbolic new start is also an unpleasant reminder of an ongoing problem, that LGBTQ people do not have basic equal rights and protections in employment, housing, and public accommodation that are afforded to other people who live in our city. In two thousand eighteen, continuing to allow legal discrimination based on sexual orientation or gender identity is not only unacceptable, but it also puts our city at a major disadvantage from an economic standpoint. As one of our recent speakers told you, bigotry is bad for business. The recent release of this year's Human Rights Campaign Municipal Equality Index, which measures the extent that cities show support for the LGBTQ people who live there even when there are no state or federal protections, clearly shows how the failure to pass basic anti-discrimination protections harms our economic development. Bowling Green received a score of seventeen on a one-hundred scale. Louisville received a hundred. It was the lowest score of the eight Kentucky cities listed. Passing a fairness ordinance would raise our score immediately, into the seventies, actually, and show potential employers and employees who consult that index before they relocate, that our leaders understand that bigotry is bad for business and that basic human rights are a positive good. That's why passing the fairness ordinance is the very top of our New Year's resolution list. Two cities in Kentucky are now seriously considering enacting fairness ordinances because they realize that bigotry is bad for business, but they also understand that protecting basic human rights and equality for all of their citizens is exactly what city governments should do. Next week, Paducah will vote on its fairness ordinance, and it's excellent that their Board of Commissioners is not only having an actual discussion, but they're moving the issue forward for a vote. In yesterday's Bowling Green Daily News, the front page story was about the top ten events of two thousand seventeen, and both Commissioner Slim Nash's historic introduction of the fairness ordinance and the inaugural Bowling Green Pride Festival made the list of the year's top stories. This obvious interest of your citizens in these stories reflects what we have said for the last two years and what we will continue to say until it happens. The people in Bowling Green want fairness, and they want it right now. It's time to start the new year on the right foot by doing the right thing, and let's catch up to what eight other cities in Kentucky have already done to protect their citizens. Could be nine by the next time we see you. May two thousand eighteen bring equal rights and human dignity to our LGBTQ community. This is our New Year's resolution, and it should be yours as well. Please make it happen for us, and thank you very much.
Other comments?
Well, hey, guys. Good afternoon. This is my second time at this kind of meeting. I love city government meetings. Awesome. Yeah, thanks for hearing me, and thanks for giving me a podium to speak. I deal with a lot of, oh, I'm not from here. I'm from Akron, Ohio, and I go to school at Western. I'm also an employee there.
Your name?
Francis. Francis Wilson. There you go. So, I have a lot of personal anxiety issues, like a lot of people around me at school and in my workplace. And one thing that has given me a lot of anxiety, at least within the city of Bowling Green while I've been here, has been this fairness ordinance. I see this not only as a personal issue, but also as a public wellness issue. It's giving me and a lot of other students anxiety issues. I think it also has another effect, and that's kind of making a real mess of what public engagement means here in Bowling Green. I mean, I'm not from here, so naturally, I want my voice to be heard even more so. And it's challenging for me with anxiety issues to be here. I'm shaking, and I had a panic attack before I came up here because this, not passing this and not discussing it, is stressful for people to come here and share their thoughts about anything. So, not only should you pass it, but also this environment needs to be a more positive environment. And so, that's kind of just my public comments. And you can come and talk to me. I'll be here after the meeting. I really appreciate all the work that you've been doing, and I hope that in this new year, we can all kind of reflect on our jobs and our responsibilities within these roles, and their effects on the public well-being. Thank you.
Do you have a fairness ordinance in the city you come from?
Akron. You know, I'm not quite sure. I haven't done the research yet. I just got involved in this recently. I am a gay man who's openly out and about, but no, I haven't, I'm not sure about Akron, Ohio. I'll get back to you on that.
You're kind of a guy. Are you under meditation?
No. I choose breathing exercises and exercise to deal with my panic attacks.
Have you had time before moving to Bowling Green?
Oh, yeah. I lived in Beijing, China, before I came to Bowling Green for school, for Chinese. And living there was very stressful, not only as a gay man, but also just as an American. And I had lots of panic attacks over there. Again, breathing exercises and exercising has helped that.
Thank you, sir.
Akron passed a fairness ordinance in March of two thousand seventeen.
Is there anyone else tonight?
Evening. My name is Robert Camp, and I live at 506 Tanglewood. So, outside of town...
Can you talk up a little louder, raise it, Mike, a little louder?
Thank you for taking the time to hear me out before, oh, and I'm speaking about the pending litigation that you all discussed in closed session earlier. Thanks for taking the time. Again, it's hard to know where to start with all that went on and the need for brevity, but the main thrust is to ensure that you all look carefully at the facts around this case and make the decision independently. Various commissioners have expressed frustration privately with being held over a barrel on decisions like this. And don't let personalities like the mayor or anyone else make these decisions for you. Your vote is being used to hide the mayor's inaction when Block Six issues were brought up initially, to hide or to bolster his, or support, his overzealous, yet false sense of justice, and obscure the city council's admittedly, in the course of recent filings, failure to properly review the documents. By reports, the city commission has agreed to spend hundreds of thousands of taxpayer dollars investigating the Block Six financial issues between state auditors and lawyers. But Slim is right. At some point, you have to start throwing, stop throwing good taxpayer money after bad. The recent dismissed filing was an egregious example of throwing good money after bad. Having been involved with Block Six from the beginning, I know that the facts alleged in the lawsuit were outright lies, severely removed from context, or highly misleading. The suit was so poor beyond the issues of standing that doomed it early, that I see three possibilities. Whoever provided KMK firm with the information in the lawsuit misled them heavily, which seems unlikely unless KMK is incompetent, but it's a reasonably large firm, so I find it unlikely that they became so hiring incompetent partners and staff.
You've got thirty seconds left on your time.
So, more likely, KMK told the city that this isn't a strong case, but the city said proceed anyway. Ultimately, I don't think the city wants to know what happened with the Block Six because no one has asked me, an employee, and a witness, what happened. No one at the city has asked the accountant who handled the finances what happened. The city doesn't seem to want to know. It looks like the city is trying to posture itself as fiscally and legally competent in the face of its failure to be so, at least with respect to Block Six.
Time is expired, sir. Thank you for being here.
Would the city or the city commission have known of you prior to tonight? Second of all, apparently, you worked there somewhere. Where was that?
I worked for HitSense, and then I worked on behalf of MFR, doing various managerial tasks for the building. And if you could have looked at the employment register of MFR, at least for the accountant over there, and then I've worked with various people in that capacity.
Well, I think if we, our role, city officials to look at the employee roles, that would be certainly think out of my line. I'm not going to come down there and ask for employee roles to see who they are. So, I'm confused as to what you are saying to us. Are you saying that you know things that other people don't know, pro or con pertaining to the respective charges that were involved in the suit the other day?
I don't know what you all know, but given the charges that were made in that lawsuit, yes, I think I know more than you all know. Otherwise, that lawsuit never would have proceeded. So, I think that would be an accurate statement.
It may be of note tonight. I don't know what is going to take place, but I certainly appreciate you making those comments. As I said...
If anyone would like to discuss it, I could be made available privately with any one of you if you want to have a conversation. But I just wanted, I don't think much public comment was allowed before this decision to proceed and spend all this money on law firms and whatnot was taking place. So, I wanted to make sure that I came out and voiced that opinion tonight.
Well, I think there are two separate things that is taking place here. And I don't know whether your saying or statements prior to us going into a closed session would have made any difference on the subject matter.
I'm making this comment, I'm glad that I was able to make this comment before you went to vote on whether to appeal the motion by the sixteenth, the motion to dismiss by the sixteenth of this month. So, I'm happy to have been afforded the opportunity to make my comment prior to that vote.
I think that's something that you may want to talk to the city attorney, and he can give you a lot better direction than I can, because I can't tell you who to talk to, but he can.
Any other comments tonight?
Thank you, sir.
Our next scheduled meeting is January sixteenth at four thirty. Thank you for tuning in.